Okay. We're live.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Montgomery County Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 16th. This meeting is being conducted by video conference via zoom.us due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be livestreamed on the county's Facebook page at Montgomery County. Will be available on local public access television, DATV, and will be posted on the county's website at www.mcohio.org per guidelines approved by House Bill 197 and extended by House Bill 404. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
First up, we have an update from Tracy Tommy. She is CEO of, I always call it the Boonshoff Museum, the Dayton Society of Natural History. So take it away, Tracy.
Thank you. Hopefully you will be able to see my slides here. Should it say annual report 2020? Is that what you see?
Yes.
All right, awesome. So we're going to move along very quickly. Thank you, Judy, and the rest of the commissioners today for allowing us this time. I know you have a packed schedule, so we're going to move fast. We put together our annual report as a team here just this year, and this is hot off the presses. We are not printing it. We're going to have it in electronic format and it will be attached with our website. So if anyone would like to see the slides, look at them later or see it. It will be on the website or you can request it. We'll happily share. So we went through a strategic planning process not very long ago before COVID, but it really set us up well to go ahead with COVID. I like to say we were in financial crisis before financial crisis was cool. And so we have been working on cutting expenses, meeting our mission. We updated our mission. Here's a cute picture of me. And then we'll move on to some of the things, just a really brief history of the museum itself. Not everyone realizes that we actually started in 1893 as part of the Dayton Public Library. And we were up on the top floor of the library downtown when the flood happened in 1913. So our collections were saved from that flood damage, which was very fortuitous. We also survived the flu pandemic of 1918. We moved around to various locations as the collections grew over the next few years, closed down during World War Two for a lack of personnel really to even run in, moved to the Roberts Pump Building. And then eventually we made our departure from the library and moved over here where the original entrance was on Bridge Avenue. And many people are very familiar with the iconic golf ball of the old planetarium. We then added on, we, we took possession of the Sunwatch Archaeological Park. It was saved from being part of the wastewater treatment plant. They found so many historic archaeological significant, significant remains there that we have taken that site. And then we shifted, we added on, we shifted the entrance over to Dewey's Parkway. Many people think it was a whole new museum. It's really just another part of the museum in addition. So now we, and then we merged with the Children's Museum, which was never actually a thing yet, but they were talking about building one. Luckily, it worked out that the two places merged. It's much stronger that way. We added on some more, changed our name with some funding from Oscar Boonshoff. And so now we are a natural history museum, a science center, a children's museum, a discovery zoo, a planetarium and an archaeological site. So within this one location, we have many features that each one of these could stand alone if they were bigger facilities, but I think it's just right for Dayton. And I'm really happy that it's all in one footprint. So education is truly what we're all about, and that's the core of why we exist as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. So I'm going to turn it over to Don Kirchner, who is our Vice President of Education. And she's going to give you some quick updates on what's happening in the education side.
Yeah, thanks, Tracy, and thanks, everyone, for having us today. So certainly, like Tracy mentioned, education is central to everything that we do. Prior to 2020 and all of the changes that it brought on, we had a lot of, of plans. So with the first, first slide that you'll see, you notice STEM is kind of front and center. So we've really been focusing on making sure that the community and all the schools that we work with really understand that as well as expanding the variety of programs that we have available. And certainly, distance learning is something we've done for a number of years, but 2020 really allowed us to expand. So as we move on, we, we have been working on curriculum projects, thanks to some state funding. So this is actually curriculum that will be made available for teachers and students in junior high and high school. We'll be piloting that this fall, which is really exciting. We certainly at the beginning of everybody being at home in 2020, we launched our Boonshoff at Home video series. So this is videos free and available to anybody in a variety of different topics. It's available YouTube. The link is on our website. There's also downloadable materials that is standardized to Ohio State standards. Again, all free and available to the public. You can see that our viewership has greatly increased over the year. Part of our virtual pivoting included scout programs. So we were able to actually reach a number of more scouts this year throughout the state of Ohio and nationwide and beyond our borders because of all of our digital expansions as well. Camp in a Box is something that we launched early spring because we were unsure if we would have onsite programming. So these are essentially themed kits with all of the materials children would need to do all of the activities at home. There was a virtual option for kids who had the ability to log in, but it wasn't necessarily all the print materials and step-by-step guidelines and additional information were included in those kits, which was really exciting. We were luckily able to hold onsite traditional camps. We did those throughout the month of July. We were able to maintain state and CDC guidelines to make sure that they were safe, yet very fun and interactive for all of our students. And because of the success of those camps, we then pivoted into hosting some learning pods onsite based on all of the feedback we got from parents. And so we piloted this program and these learning pods are essentially facilitated learning opportunities for children enrolled in virtual learning. And so these were so popular that, of course, the city of Dayton reached out, Dayton Children's reached out and said, can we make this available for our employee students? And so we said, certainly, we will have to apply for temporary pandemic license, which we awarded at the end of 2020. That program is still going strong even today. We're hosting kids in two pods onsite. We've made a lot of upgrades to our zoo. We continue to move forward. We will be reaccredited this year through the AZA, which is very exciting. And then we have continued to offer a variety of public programs and events to the community just in different formats, again, either in small group formats. If it was Fourth of July fireworks that were digital, or even our virtual fundraiser bash was completely virtual this year and thanks to anybody who participated in making that a success. This is just a quick diagram just to show how our attendance has decreased over the last year. Of course, we've continued to reach people virtually. And certainly, as 2020 drew to an end, we really were able to see that we reached a lot of people in a different format. Virtually, we were still able to provide content to teachers and to the community. Pods at the end of 2020, we had over 5,000 hours that we interacted directly with students. And we were still able to reach new community partners such as the USO at Wright-Patt doing virtual programs. So we're very proud of that and look forward to more in 2020. So I'm going to hand it back over to Tracy for some more information.
You, Don. Okay, so on the financial report, I'm not going to go through very much detail. Again, this is all available. We do have an outside audit every year. But we did see in 2020, a reduction, about a 75% reduction in our earned revenue due to the COVID shutdowns. We were closed for three months, opened and then closed again for two, two weeks. And then we opened again. And we are open now. We're seeing about 30% of our normal attendance. So if you asked me in the past, like what really drives attendance? There's some blips that you will see where it kind of goes up a little down, maybe some traveling exhibits, some cool stuff. But 2020, you can see COVID is a driver, like it really knocked our attendance down. And of course, memberships as well. So one thing I would say on that is we were able to apply for PPP funding. We were awarded around $400,000 and it was forgiven. And thank you very much for the CARES Act funding that we received through the county and also through the city. So those were game changers. Just a quick couple of updates. We have been looking at how we truly engage with the community, which is really where this meeting sprung out of. Judy was at our Community Engagement Committee meeting and said, I would like you to share. So this, like I call it my flower petal graph, but on each one of these, you can go a little bit deeper. So here's all of the different associations that we belong to. So as I say, we're a zoo and a zoo, a historic site. You can see all of these we are truly connected with. And then we have different partnerships. All of these are not an all-inclusive list, but a list of many of the programs we worked with different organizations just in 2020 on different programs. I'm going to jump over to some current activities that we have going on. This is everything we do in a normal day. And each one of these as well, you can dig a little deeper. So looking like at the DoLab, these have been recently remodeled, updated, and they do have distance learning capabilities. So that's everything that we are. And then jumping to future projects, and as we're moving forward, some things we're working on right now is we are raising funds. We have about half of that funding raised to redo the Bezier Classroom into the Bezier Room of Wonders. And then COVID happened, so we've been on a little bit of a delay with that project, but we are not giving up. We're starting to raise funds again now. You would see this room is a very different look. It's a throwback to that original museum, very hands-on, very family-friendly, adult-looking furniture, but also child-sized, sort of an Alice in Wonderland kind of feel of exploration. We would like to redo the entire first floor of the Kids Place area down to the DoLab. So it tells the natural history story of Dayton and Dayton's waterways, including the Aquifer. So highlighting, taking out the current water table, putting in one that really shows the confluence of the Three Rivers Downtown Dayton. Talk about the Miami Conservancy District, Central Parks, how important water is for the community. New climb on structures, et cetera. We've taken a look at how we represent women and minorities within our museum and were awarded a national grant from the Association of Science and Technology Centers to do more work there and to make an even stronger appeal for more women and minorities in STEM fields. We found that we have a gap and the community kind of does as well for the zero-to-three age children. So we are working on that. We have that fully funded and we're starting that project now to add more interactive for zero to threes. We do not have food onsite, so we're looking to add what we call an eco-friendly cafe, which would be a cafe that focuses on healthy food, how food affects your health, and also composting and recycling. Our amphitheater out front, we just recently received funding from Junior League, so we would be remodeling that and getting it back where we can use it. Over at Sunwatch, we won a national level grant for the National Endowment for Humanities to do some internal updates to that site as well. Much needed, but very unsexy project, so we'll be working on that soon. That is everything that I would like to share with you today. I'm not sure exactly how many minutes that took, Emily, but I think we made it. So if anyone has any questions, I would open it up for any questions for Don or myself.
I don't have questions. I think it's quite exciting to see all that, but I have to tell you, I'm especially curious about the zero to three because that's an area that I focus on. So I would love to be able to, you know, include that in the things I cover. So maybe we follow up after this meeting sometime.
Yes, Carolyn, I would be happy to update you on that. That's an area, you know, they think of us as a children's museum, but really our children start at more like four, three and four and up. So we're really diving into that and I can share that project with you.
It all looks exciting, so.
It's a lot.
We bring our grandkids there, so.
I know.
Yeah, well, you know, you guys are so engaged and energetic and passionate about what you do, and you could tell that from this. And I was so impressed when I saw this several weeks ago at that one committee meeting. And, you know, my kids went there and, you know, there's just so much to do. You kind of forget, you know, all the different layers of different activities and just exciting things that are going on there. So I know the commissioners, I know we've been at different events there. And in fact, my assistant got married there in the planetarium of just about three or four days before the COVID shutdown. So that was a neat, very neat event. So anyway, just we appreciate you coming and sharing this with, with our listeners and hopefully you'll be getting some enthusiastic calls and more visitors. That's what we want, right? More visitors.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I appreciate all that, really everyone, all the faces I'm looking at, what you're doing for this community. We feel it. We know we're taking some hits. We know everybody is, but we know that you're there for us and we know that everyone's leaning very far forward to make sure Dayton comes out of this even stronger. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next up, County Engineer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, Boonshot folks, and ladies and gentlemen online. We have quite a few items today, so I'll get started. First resolution is Resolution 21-240 to authorize an agreement with TEC Engineering, Inc. for the Traffic General Engineering Services Project at a cost not to exceed $50,000 through June 30th of 2023. And then we have a couple of agreements to amend. 241 is with Brumbaugh Construction, Inc. for the Bell Fountain Road Bridge Replacement Project, Design, Build in Huber Heights by adding $50,354 to the original amount for a revised total of $802,889. And 242 is with Eagle Bridge Company for the Third Street Bridge Replacement Project in the city of Dayton by adding $12,328.70 to the original amount for a revised total of $17,7,465.81. Then we have a number of road closings. 243 is for Johnsville-Burkville Road between US 35 and Old Dayton Road, lasting for approximately five days for culvert replacement. 244 is for Decant Road between Farmersville West, Alex Road and Sulfur Springs Road, lasting approximately three days for roadway paving. 245 is Brown's Run Road between Ohio 725 and Kiefer Road, lasting approximately three days for roadway paving. 246 is Little Richmond Road between Crawford Tom's Run Road and Johnsville-Burkville Road, lasting approximately 21 days for roadway paving. 247 is Seton Hill Street between Brookway Road and Whip Road, lasting for approximately 45 days for bridge reconstruction. 248 is for Bull Road between Decant Road and US 35, lasting approximately three days for roadway paving. And 249 is for Whip Road between Mad River Road and State Route 48, lasting approximately 45 days for bridge reconstruction. And then we have a couple of plats to accept. Authorizing certain streets located in Washington Township are satisfactory for placement in the Washington Township Road System. Release the subdividers contracts and reduce the performance bonds to 10% maintenance bonds and sidewalk bonds. 250 is for Windstone Plat Section 3, and 251 is for Windstone Plat Section 4.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, I didn't hear other ayes. Does everybody say aye?
Yes.
Okay, all right, sorry. County Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 252. Accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Office of Criminal Justice Services, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for the Regional Agency's Narcotic and Gun Enforcement Range Task Force in the amount of $60,748.78. We also have Resolution 253. Authorize the purchase through an HGAC by cooperative contract from Ergo Flex Systems, Inc., DBA Exebix Systems, Inc. of Carpet and Installation Services for Regional Dispatch Center in an amount not to exceed $93,882. We also have one late item. Resolution 295. Extend the Master Services Agreement with Smart Communications Holdings, Inc. for the Mail Guard Postal Elimination System through May 31st, 2026, with options to renew.
I move for approval.
I second. All those in favor? Aye. Common Police Court?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Common Police Court, we have Resolution 254. Authorizing payment by warrant for various invoices in a total amount of $51,428.46.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? County Coroner?
Under the County Coroner, we have Resolution 255. Authorizing a payment by warrant to the Ohio State Coroner's Association in the amount of $14,345.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye. County Administrator?
Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk's office, we have approved of the minutes of the meeting on March 2nd, 2021. Resolution 256, approval of bills, and that list is available in the Clerk's office.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Administrative Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have quite a few items for your consideration today. The first is 257. This is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the Clerk's office. 258 authorizes a payment by warrant to Vectren in the amount of $2,194.56. 259 authorizes an agreement with Dr. M. Lynn Loving, doing business as Family Practice Associates of Dayton LLC for physician services for the Stillwater Center in an amount not to exceed $92,718 to December 31st of 2021. Resolution 260 approves a Courthouse Square Vendors License Agreement for space rental on Courthouse Square for Dayton's original pizza through December 31st of 2021. 261 authorizes a sublease agreement with Sinclair Community College for the subleasing of 1,735 square feet of office space located at the West Town Employment Opportunity Center through June 30th of 2024 with options to renew. 262 authorizes a price agreement with Addus Healthcare Incorporated, doing business as Arcadia Home Care and Staffing for temporary nursing services for the Stillwater Center through January 31st of 2022 with options to renew. 263 requests proposals for recycling and trash hauling services for Montgomery County-owned and operated facilities. 264 authorizes the purchase from Emerge IT Solutions for the Job Center Virtual Environment for the Job and Family Services Department in an amount not to exceed $121,725.23. 265 authorizes the purchase through a GSA Schedule 70 Contract with Ascendant Strategy Management Group, LLC for a ClearPoint Strategy Software and Support Agreement for the Office of Strategic Initiatives in an amount not to exceed $134,624.24 through March 15th of 2025. 266 authorizes a sole source purchase from AMCS Resource Technology for equipment and professional services for the 2021 PC Scale Upgrade Project for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $80,850. Resolution 267 authorizes the purchase of equipment through a state-term contract and open market from MNJ Technologies for the 2021 PC Scale Upgrade Project for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $32,475.55. 268 authorizes the purchase from Wyble Energy Systems, the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance Contract for HVAC upgrades and replacement at the Haynes Center in an amount not to exceed $709,454. Resolution 269 authorizes the purchase of equipment and professional services from Emerge IT Solutions for the ES Sand Project for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $61,225.68. And finally, Resolution 270 authorizes the purchase to the Omnia Partners Public Sector Cooperative Contract from Garland DBS for roofing materials and services for the Environmental Services, Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $106,141.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye. Environmental Services, Matt?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I got, I think I got 11 items for your consideration plus one late item. Resolution 271 is authorize a payment by warrant to EH Wox in the amount of $10,535.34. Resolution 272 amend the agreement with Black and Beach Corporation for the preparation of detailed construction plans and specifications for the sanitary conveyance and treatment Western Regional Project by adding $240,015 to the original amount for a total of $11,134,897 due to a change in the scope of work. 273 release 100% of the cash security and subdividers contract with Minster Bank for the Minster Bank Vendalia Butler Branch. 274 approve the plan specifications and estimated cost of $2 million in solicit bids for the construction of the Bulk Waste Compactor Project. The next two are to authorize agreements. 275 with Kennison Excavating, Inc. for construction of the Terrace Villa Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Contract 2 at their lowest and best bid of $1,233,450 through March 31st, 2022. And with 276 is with Red Zone Robotics Incorporated for construction of the large diameter sanitary sewer cleaning and assessment phase three project at their lowest and best bid of $315,332.50 through November 30th, 2021. The next three or two submit applications to participate in Ohio Water Development Authority, OWDA, Local Government Agency Loan Program, and authorize cooperative agreements with OWDA for implementation of various projects. First is 277 with, for the Terrace Villa Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Contract 2 in the amount of $685,000. 278 is spinning and Eastman Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $116,406. And 279 Gunther and Schroeder Water Main Replacement Project in $316,402. The next two are to release 100% of the performance bonds and subdividers contracts. 280 John R. Jurgensen Company for the Grillit and Bosch Plat. And 281 George J. Igle and Company in Far Hills Baptist Church for the Far Hills Baptist Church. And the late item is Resolution 296 to authorize an agreement with Milkon Concrete Incorporated for construction of the spinning and Eastman Water Main Replacement Project at their lowest and best bid of $797,997.10 through January 21st, 2022.
I move for approval.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. OMB, John?
Hi, good afternoon. Have six items for your consideration. Number 282 to authorize appropriation amendments. 283 to authorize additional appropriations. 284 to authorize cash transfers. 285 authorize appropriation decreases. And I have two authorization agreements through December 31st, 2021. 286 is for Ohio State University Extension in Montgomery County for purposes prescribed in ORC Section 3335.36 at a cost not to exceed $198,652. And 287 for Catholic Social Services of the Miami Valley for the provision of guardianship services for the probate court in an amount not to exceed $90,000.
I move for approval.
I second. All those in favor? Business Services, Chris?
Good afternoon. Under Workforce Development, 0288 authorizing an agreement with Chronic Choices LLC to provide pre-release services through jail-based job readiness activities for post-release incarcerated adults in the amount of $190,505 through December 31st, 2022. Under Community and Economic Development, we have 0289 authorizing the submission of the Second Substantial Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2019 Action Plan related to the additional funding from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. We have authorizing a delegation of activities agreements, 0290. City of West Carrollton for the Carrollton Center Street Caping Project in an amount not to exceed $65,000 through December 31st, 2021. 0291 City of Moraine for the Haverstix South Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $150,000 through December 31st, 2022. 0292 City of Germantown for the Downtown Facade Improvements Program in an amount not to exceed $18,432.63 of Community Development Block Grant Funds through, I'm sorry, June 30th, 2021. 0293 Miami Township for the Scatter Site Demolition Project in an amount not to exceed $40,000 of Community Development Block Grant Funds through November 30th, 2021.
I move for approval.
Second. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. County commi-, under county commissioners, 21-0294 appoint Carolyn Rice Commissioner with John Hopwood as alternate and Paul Gruner Engineer with Jerry Shoup as alternate to serve on the District 4 Ohio Public Works Integrating Committee effective June 1st, 2021 through May 31st, 2024.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor? Okay, county administrator?
Thank you, commissioners. You know, commissioners, at the end of the school year, as it's quickly wrapping up for most of our school age children, high school graduation is a significant rite of passage, especially for our seniors. And we hope that many high school graduates in our community will be able to go to college and to continue their education. As you know, we have our own workforce giving campaign last month so we could continue to fund a United Negro College Fund or UNCF scholarship. I'm very proud of the fact that we fund scholarships specifically for people right here in Montgomery County. So the scholarships are open now and you need to act now if you want to apply for one. Go to https://scholarshipsuncf.org. Again, that's scholarships.uncf.org. That will take you to the UNCF page and at the bottom of the page, it says, "Search for Scholarships." Click on that and on the next page in Montgomery County and click "Search." Our scholarship comes right up. Click on the details and find out if you're eligible and then click "Apply" on the top left side. Commissioners, you want to weigh in on this?
Sure, I will. You know, this is such a wonderful thing that we, as Montgomery County employees, can offer these scholarships. We all know, especially those of us that have just put children through college, Michael still is. We know that every little bit helps. College isn't getting any cheaper, unfortunately. And for us as county employees to be able to help specific scholarship winners, I think is great. And this is one way that we, as Montgomery County employees, can support our students in Montgomery County and help them meet their goals. So I think it's pretty self-explanatory, Michael, what you showed, but for anybody out there that is perhaps seeing this, if you know anyone or, you know, grandchild, a child, like, let's make sure that we get this word out on this because this is, this is exciting. And then another way that we are helping young people realize their dreams is by sponsoring our Male Leadership Academy. And very soon, we will launch the Female Leadership Academy. And our Male Leadership Academy program that we began in late 2019, I can't believe that was 2019. It seems like it's been years, the past year, but through it all, we had a group of mentees complete their first year of the program and we thought that was a great reason to celebrate, so we did have a celebration slash graduation. I heard it was a lot of fun. I unfortunately wasn't able to be there, but you know, this just shows the power of mentorship. It, mentorship is so important for every child, but this, our specific focus on the male young men in our community is so important. And so we're really proud of these young students and we're very thankful to all of our mentors. As we launched this program, we were able to get a lot of mentors that we know, county employees and others, so again, to everybody that worked on this, Marvina and her team, thank you.
Absolutely, and I know what we asked of the, you know, the young men too, was to help us spread the word because, you know, they had gotten so much out of it and nothing beats word of mouth as far as getting other young men to sign up for the program, so that whole male leadership is off to a great start, so. I, I know all of us just love being around young people who, they're getting that spark of believing in themselves and seeing possibilities. So very awesome program. I also wanted to talk about another event that took place last week that was really exciting. You know, 10 years ago in Japan, they had that earthquake and then it was followed with a horrific tsunami that, as you can see from the pictures on the screen, more than 16,000 people were, lost their lives in Japan as a result of that tsunami. And at the time, the whole world came to their rescue, but especially there was many people from Wright Patterson Air Force Base that actually played a role in that. Really coming to the, you know, kind of demonstrated how we're all a global world, a big community. And one of our residents, Alex Hera, who is a Japanese American, but, you know, lives here, works in, I believe, in the banking community. He was so touched by that experience and how the Miami Valley and so many people from Montgomery County came to the rescue of his native country, that he came up with the idea, just like they have in Washington DC. The si-, the cherry tree is a sign of friendship between the two nations. And so I don't know, it was sometime shortly after the tsunami, they started Operation 1,000 Cherry Trees. And needless to say, they have, they have met that call and decided to extend it. And now they're working on Operation 2,000 Cherry Trees. I know that Montgomery County has got one of the early trees. The picture here was the group last week as they're planting another round of trees and at the Dayton Art Institute. And so we're embarking on another 1,000 cherry trees that we want to be planted all over this region. We think it could be just beautiful in the spring, but it really will exemplify the friendships between the two nations. And I know I have one in my front yard, which is pretty cool. Another local connection is that Governor Taft is on the Cherry Tree Project Committee and his great-grandmother, Helen Taft, actually, in her communications with the Japanese ambassador, is what got started the whole idea of bringing the cherry trees over to Washington DC. So that's another connection. So not only Washington DC, but we hope here in Dayton, Ohio and Montgomery County will replicate that. And our own Eric Collins is very heavily involved in that. And who else am I leaving out? The former Dayton Chamber of Commerce, Phil Parker, very involved. So we had a very nice event last week at the Dayton Art Institute. And it's just, it's just a wonderful, wonderful project that can only grow and we hope someday they'll introduce the 3,000 cherry tree extension of the project. So it was pretty exciting to see, you know, there was a time when we didn't, weren't sure we could get 1,000 people to donate and buy those cherry trees and now we've exceeded that, but, you know, Montgomery County, we, any goal you give us, we always try to not just meet it, but exceed it. So this is just one more example of that. So it was fun. And you can come to my house this spring when they're in bloom, or I'll post a picture of it so you can see. It gets bigger and more beautiful every year and just multiply that by thousands.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's gonna be beautiful. And I think that Michael said that Reddiger from the Dayton Art Institute, they're gonna plant them down there by the river, up and down there, yeah. So that'll be, that'll really be beautiful down there. And I know we have two right outside the county administration building here and I know soon they're gonna be blooming, so it's exciting.
Any other spaces, we should talk to our facilities people and see if there's any other places on county property that might be a good candidate for it.
Mm-hmm. Maybe facing Third Street to more, you can see it, yep. Well, Commissioner Rice and I, just what, about maybe two weeks ago, Carolyn, we got to take a peek at the Gem City Market. I can't wait for that to open. That is gonna be absolutely fantastic. And I, my understanding is they're hiring right now. So the market is gonna offer the community, especially the individuals in Northwest Dayton, a place to buy healthy food. And besides a grocery store, it's gonna offer nutrition classes and it's gonna have a community room available. And that is a large one, isn't it, Carolyn? That was a pretty big, yeah, for different meetings. But it's also gonna have a coffee shop, so I'm happy about that. And also, there's gonna be a mini health clinic there. So it's just gonna be a great addition to that neighborhood there, as well as other people. It doesn't necessarily have to be just in that, that little neighborhood downtown, people that live downtown, people that, just all over, all over Montgomery County. So we're looking forward to the opening, no question about it.
Yeah, and Michael, I'm just gonna say that I made a commitment that we might try having a meeting there sometime in the future. Just to, there is a beautiful community room that would, I know we don't do that very often, but I think it would be really awesome to take our meeting just down the street a few blocks one day and have it there and just show the whole, you know, on here or whatever, how beautiful that setting is. So just.
Sounds like a, sounds like a great idea, Commissioner.
Yeah, and the community room there, it's right on the corner of
Cross from the police station, Superior and Salem.
Mm-hmm. It'd be a great place. And Debbie, you remember, we used to, we used to go on the road quite a few times, so this'll be going on the road again.
I know it's probably not easy, but it'll be worth it.
Oh, yeah. No question about it. Okay, I'm just gonna do this again because it's, it isn't up yet. We've still got a ways to go, but it's getting there. We're getting there. So please, please wear your mask, socially distance and wash your hands. So our next Montgomery County Commission meeting will be Tuesday, March 23rd at 1:30.
I'm in to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Have a good week.
Thank you.
Thank you.